All right, it's seven o'clock. If we're going in, Stan, it's in the pledge. We'll go ahead and get started.
I believe in to be the light, the United States of America, in a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with our Spotlight School, Greenfield Central. Junior high.
Good evening. We are here to be the Spotlight School. You know, after forty years in the district, I've seen quite a few changes. One of the changes I really never thought I would see, though, is how few teachers we can find. And so when I had a resignation last year in technology, I thought, oh. And so we posted it and we had one candidate from Texas. I'm happy to tell you, we hired that gentleman. He is doing a great job. He's revitalizing our technology department. But I'm gonna let him tell you about it along with three of his students. Please welcome Mr. Martin, who's gonna talk with you a little bit about technology.
Hey, good evening. I'm Andrew Martin. I'm the new tech ed teacher at the junior high. The last ten years, I taught and coached in Houston, Texas. And then this summer, I had the opportunity to move up here and I was really excited to teach in Greenfield Central. This year, working with the high school teachers, we have been shifting our class focus to manufacturing and producing products. This year, we acquired a small laser engraver through the foundation in the Make-A-Wish program. The laser has been great for our students, giving them something to like, giving them things that they can make in class and then take home with them. The students can really run that themselves. I don't, I teach it once and then they kind of go through it and they teach each other how to use it. And that's something we use a lot in class right now. As a class, we are planning on acquiring new equipment and just keep going into that manufacturing. Next year, we'll also be offering a level two class for our eighth graders, where our students that are seventh graders right now will expand upon that. And then they will also get to build bigger things, more like benches and picnic tables and stuff that we can put around campus. Tonight with me, I have Blake DeBree, Aiden John-Icey, and Maria, or Maria Marisol. These three students have been great in my class this year and we have prepared a video of our production process. So that, that's just kind of how quick the process goes. Usually kids will design on paper, then go to Canva. And then, once we make it in Canva, we'll do some type of prototype. We got a lot of cardboard this year and so that's great for like small things like that. Each one of my students, they actually have a small keychain and a packet for you guys. You guys can go ahead and go up and give those. The packet just kind of speaks more about our program and kind of where we're trying to lead it. Would any of you guys have any questions for myself or any of my students?
We have already mentioned, but got that from a wish. What's, what is in line for next year? I know you mentioned more equipment, maybe I missed it.
Maybe another one of those. That's a pretty small laser engraver. It will only do like four inches by four inches. And then, kind of, if we have two, it would really streamline stuff. Because when we're using it, it's like the whole class period. And it just takes a long time. Like, you saw these keychains, literally, the video was not sped up. Takes like thirty seconds a piece. But if we're doing something bigger, like wood or something that needs more time, we're just like, it's the whole class. We're on that thing all day.
Foundation event this year, I think I'm like, you know what I'm looking for.
There are no further questions. I want to illustrate what Mr. Martin is doing. I would love to tell you that was a great part of my plan. It's been a bit serendipitous. But what's going on at our school is paving the way for the new graduation pathways that the kids are gonna enter into at the high school. In fact, Blake, who is here today, not only has he benefited from this, but he's also benefited from our media class that Mrs. Holden is teaching. Because Blake was not that good of a speaker originally. Now Blake is doing a great job and I look forward to him in a TV station someday because he's really found out how to make it happen. So, Mr. Martin, guys, thank you very much. We appreciate you showing our best.
We'll move on. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We did not have any requests.
We'll continue with the routine matters. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting for March tenth? Twenty five, the executive session for March tenth? And the executive session for March twenty sixth, twenty twenty five?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on March tenth, the executive session on March tenth, the executive session on the twenty sixth, and the special session on April second.
Can I get a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, say. On to claims, Mr. Day.
Yes, senior packet this month are both the regular and payroll claims as well as construction claim. As you can see, we're very quickly closing out that account with the construction funds down to a very, very small balance of payment. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about any of the claims in the docket. Otherwise, ask the board to approve it as presented.
Yeah, no comments or questions. Can I get a motion to approve the claim docket as presented?
Move we approve claim docket as presented.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say, on to old and unfinished business, financial matters, Mr. Day.
Yes, including your packet. It's financial report, which has the final February and March receipts and expenditures. And actually, the January's been updated as well. We did have our February ADM count that we talked about last month. It was down a little bit, but not very much from the fall. We've talked about how that's going to continue to be a concern for us, particularly as the legislature works through the new budget. We've been talking a lot about operations fund. What's coming at us in terms of Senate Bill One is concerning. Talking about three point two million dollars over the next three years in decrease in our revenue. That's gonna primarily impact the operations fund. We have to find some ways to economize there. We're also gonna find some ways to reinforce that revenue. So that's items that we are gonna look at. The session is scheduled to end on April twenty ninth. Maybe a little bit earlier, but we really won't know what's going on with final bills until then. Senate Bill One has changed three times, including twice in about twenty-four hours last week. Yes, yeah, we're up north of three hundred and fifty pages on Senate Bill One. So it's, it's a very complicated process right now. There's just a fair amount of legislative uncertainty. Happy to answer any questions about the reports. I will try to answer questions about legislation, but like I said, it changes a lot very quickly.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Day? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to instruction and program report.
We have two different components here in the instruction report. I'm actually gonna yield to Mr. Kerr on the first part to give a few highlights about our last e-learning day from last week.
We had a great e-learning day last Tuesday across the district. You can see there, we rolled out a lot of our new literature and English adoptions, K eight. So that was a great day there. Also, we dug a little bit deeper into reveal and envision. Worked on some STEM work there as well. Had Dr. Rousher talking about best practices. Junior High had Amy Abel with TBRI as well as talking about the upcoming iLearn assessment. And then the high school really dug into the new high school diploma and tried to get a little proactive with what's going on there. So it's a great day around the district. We appreciate that time. I know those days are special and so we, we don't take those for granted, so.
Speaking of that, we will likely make a request for three days. Well, we are gonna request three days for next year as well. Unfortunately, the weather cooperated with this this year that we weren't asking families to have an overabundance of the e-learning days. But it is helpful for us to provide that professional development, really kindergarten through preschool, all the way through our high school program. So thank you. The second part in there is really the continuation of the conversations we've been having really with those, those three goals, creating more efficient, effective space for preschool and our corporation as well as taking a look at our programming from grades four through six. There's some things that we can tweak to improve performance. And then item three, there are other ways that we can find some operational efficiencies. We started that conversation really well over a year ago. We've had a couple of studies done. I shared some of that with you last month. You did ask for some further information. So we did survey our current third grade families. We have approximately, right at two hundred and ninety-four students. We heard back from a hundred and fifty of the families on the survey, asking them about their preferences for fourth grade in terms of what setting they'd like to see their children receiving fourth grade instruction. And it was just under seventy-seven percent of our families that suggested they would like that to happen in the current elementary schools, that they're in. Another six and a half percent not having a preference and sixteen percent preferring to move on to an intermediate school setting. You'd also asked us to have some conversation with our fourth grade teachers. As you've seen, you have seen, I did meet with our fourth grade teachers. Did you write? On the twenty-sixth. We heard, had fourteen of our general education teachers there in that setting as well as a couple of our special education teachers who teach fourth grade, provide an opportunity for some questions. But I think most of our teachers, after asking a few questions, really wanted some time to reflect on that. We did send a survey out to those sixteen professionals and all of them provided some feedback for us in terms of their preferences. And you certainly see that we did have a majority of our teachers that preferred the idea of students being, fourth grade students being in an intermediate school setting. That last piece, you had asked for some feedback from our administrative team. We did meet with our elementary and intermediate principals, actually. Mr. Jack and Mr. Marine had those, those settings. And you can see just a list of some of the items that they wanted to make sure that we had, had thought of. Really, after considering all of that, I just would kind of ask you to reflect on the four bullet points that I closed with. They're really taking a look at educational research. It's really consistent that fourth grade students perform best academically, behaviorally, and attendance, looking at those measures when they are educated in an elementary setting. As we've looked at our facility studies, we do have plenty of space in our elementary schools to accommodate that. We certainly see proponents of our parents recommending that. And I guess the last piece there, though we did have some of our fourth grade teachers, many of whom are here this evening, had shared some, some concerns or some obstacles that they had identified. We believe that we can work through those obstacles that were listed, some of those about whether or not we departmentalize or whether we do things in a self-contained setting. I think we can make sure that we're as close to where we are right now, even if that's in an elementary setting. There are some things that they've referenced that are certainly, change is uncomfortable. We always want to have a lot of time to prepare for that. I just believe that, my team and I believe that we are prepared to, to meet those challenges. So I guess you would be hearing from me today, knowing that really all the paths that we're looking at for Greenfield Central that we've considered over the last twelve to fourteen months really have us putting fourth grade students back in an elementary school. We certainly have some things we need to iron out in terms of what steps two and three might be, as to what that looks like. But we do believe that next right step for us would be to put our fourth grade students in the elementary setting. So you would have that recommendation from me this evening.
Yeah, before we make a motion, I just wanted to let everyone know that we appreciate your emails and from the teachers and the community. And we do look at that. We do read all, all of your concerns and comments on that. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we do read, read everything that you guys send this way. So if anybody else has it.
Yeah, I would just add, I'm particularly grateful for the feedback that we got from the teachers in response to that, that survey that went out was very detailed. Went over all of the concerns from the perspective of the experts in that fourth grade classroom. And that really helps us as a board. We're obviously balancing the many things that Dr. Owen referenced, where that information is invaluable to us in trying to balance all of those concerns. So thank you.
I guarantee you that, me being a teacher in the past, we definitely consider a few of those of the teachers as we make our decision. And we've, again, thanks for providing all the reading for me. We will definitely look at all of that when we make our decisions.
I think Dr. Owen said it best of all the plans. There's been lots of ideas thrown around. Look at those and then, before making a decision, and solicit the input of everyone that affects the most. So first thing I said was, let's ask the third grade parents. And then it kind of snowballed from there. I mean, as a teacher, changing a few grade levels or teaching in a detention center. But it's, it's certainly interesting because I have my thoughts. I have a three and a half year old and a one year old. But then it's good to hear the other perspectives. I taught in eighth grade. I never taught in fourth grade. So just being able to read those and like the Dr. Owen gives us time, doesn't just spring on us before and say, here's my idea, here's their thoughts. We had, I think, almost a week, maybe two weeks to really read it and digest it. So thank you.
Time to move it forward. Can I get a motion to move the fourth grade to, back to the elementary schools?
Make a motion to move in the fall of twenty twenty-five, fourth grade at Greenfield Central back to the tier one.
Can I get a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, say.
And we'll follow up with that. Obviously, I know this is big news to a lot of our teachers. I think just giving them some assurances that right away we will start following up with some preferences that our teachers have in terms of location, teaching partners they would like to be with. We'll certainly be taking that into consideration and work hard to give you your first choices on that.
All right, thank you. All right, nothing more. We'll go on to construction project updates.
It was pretty brief this month on the construction project, really giving an update on the, the Greenfield Central West or what we've commonly called the Frost Property Improvements. We continue to move forward with bid documents there. Also giving you a little bit of a summary on the Greenfield Central High School Gymnasium Flooring Project that is, words we don't hear very often, ahead of schedule right now. Obviously, it was our goal to make sure that we were done well before graduation. And I think we had some photos from Mr. Brook or Mr. Wallbaum earlier today that, that show that we're definitely where we want to be on that project. And then the last one with the staff daycare facility that we have on Green Meadows Drive. Again, working with the city on that with the permitting process and, and design. We believe that we're still on track to have that finalized prior to the end of July so we can meet the needs of staff. Happy to take any questions about any of those three projects at this time.
Any questions, Thomas? All right, thanks. We'll move on to land serve.
Actually.
It was on mine.
No.
Go with my pass.
Yeah, we're just not, we won't do that one.
All right, on to new business, business information, Mr. Day.
Yeah, this month, we have two donations. The first is the Greenfield Central High School received a donation of tools from DeWalt for use by the HVAC program. The value of the donation is three thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. And you can see a list of those tools on the second page of this report. And the corporation received a donation of four sensory carts, one for each elementary school from Leirship Hancock County. The value of these carts is one thousand dollars. And we also have a commitment from the Boys and Girls Club to donate refill refurbishment supplies for these sensory carts moving into the future. I asked of the school board to approve these grants and donations as presented. The amount of these opportunities is four thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the grants and donations as presented?
I move we approve the grants and donations as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. On to Hancock Public Library.
Actually, I have Cody Flood with us this evening as well as Genie Roberts. You know, Genie is your representative on the board. And then Cody's just gonna give some highlights from the annual report from twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I appreciate you giving me a few minutes to talk about the great things that happened at the library last year. And we're obviously well into twenty twenty-five and things are still going well. You have the slides in front of you. That first picture is actually a shot of the library on Election Day in, in November. And the line's out the door. We'll talk more about that in a little bit, but that's just in the full parking lot. For the first time, the library was actually closed on Election Day. And you can see why we made that decision because it was very, very busy. But, but well-used that day. We'll jump into library funding. I've talked about this the last few years, but our funding mechanism is a little bit different than other libraries, so it's worth revisiting. We get income tax in, in Hancock County, which is different than every other library in the state. So our budget is comprised of local income tax, which previously was county adjusted growth income tax and county economic development income tax. That's now under local income tax, one, one big pool that we draw from. We do get a little bit of license and excise tax and then barely enough to mention, but it is their financial institution tax. That is where our primary funding sources are for our budget. Kind of the history of how that worked. In nineteen ninety-nine, a ceded fund for Hancock County and Vernon Township Public Libraries was established. And so the way that it's calculated is based off of property tax calculations. However, once that calculation is made, the, we get the amount from the income tax pools. However, we do not take all the money from, from the ceded funds. The city, county, and towns receive the majority of that and we can't take additional above and beyond that. And that's the same for both the Hancock County Library and the Vernon Township Library. But if anything were to ever happen to those funds, we do have property tax backup in place and so we would still be funded if something happened to the income tax funds. But that's been a really great way to ensure countywide service in the libraries. Yeah, you can go on to the next one. Throughout the county, since we've done that in nineteen ninety-nine, it's more equitable that way, in my opinion, especially in a, in a rural county in the eastern parts of the county where it just makes it more fair, in my opinion. But moving on to the next slide, some more exciting things that, that deal more with the schools. For the last several years, since two thousand and eighteen, we've issued digital-only access cards to all the students at all four county schools. So we've seen over twenty-seven hundred students that have received the digital cards have actually come on into the library to sign up for a physical card, which is great to see. And those students have checked out over thirteen thousand items. We do have some new data analytic tools that we're using this year. So hopefully, next year, we'll be able to be even more granular with that and we'll be able to say how many Greenfield Central students have actually come on to be library users with the physical materials, not just the digital. Though the teachers here do a great job of making use of the electronic resources we provide in the classroom. So we, we are very happy to partner with the schools in that regard. Just some quick statistics for twenty twenty-four. We saw an increase of nine percent in new library card signups, just a little over three thousand for the year. I actually prefer the next one even better with library card renewals. They were up sixty-eight percent. That's pretty common in an election year. We do get a lot of people coming back. That seems to be when they renew their cards. But over eight thousand, that means we're retaining the people and that's what I'd love to see, you know, happy patrons coming back and continuing to use the library. Our door counts were up seven percent, over four hundred and ninety thousand visitors throughout the year. Our circulation remained fairly static. I should have checked out one more item and got us to nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand. That's on me. So I'll take the blame for that. But we did remain at number twelve overall in the state for overall circulation, which is something I'm really proud of, given our service population to be at number twelve in the state when all the other libraries ahead of us serve significantly larger areas is just a testament to how much the community values our library. And then summer reading was a great turnout. We had over thirty-eight hundred participants and almost seven and a half million minutes read in the summer. And so we're getting ready to head into next summer reading and we're hoping to surpass even those numbers this year. Some electronic resources that we do offer. I mentioned the, the teachers making use of these. We have Libby and Hoopla, which is primarily our eBooks and digital audiobooks. But Hoopla also has streaming movies and, and TV shows as well as some graphic novels and comic books and even music that you can stream and listen to. So there's a lot there in Hoopla. Canopy has more independent films. And then we added newspapers.com this past year. We, we always had local newspapers, but this has papers dating back quite far from several surrounding major newspapers if people are willing to do local history research or genealogy research and those kind of things. And that just barely scratches the surface of what we offer. We have Brainfuse, which is one-on-one tutoring, live tutoring and, and study tools. We have Mango, which is a language learning software platform. We have Worldbook for Kids. And even more than that, but I, I'm not gonna go over all those. I invite you to go to the website and check those out. So lots of good stuff there. People don't always realize what all you can get access to for free with your library card. Imagination Library is going very, very well. While we're just the registration arm of that, we don't provide any, any funding towards it. That's through the endowment at the Community Foundation. But we currently have over twenty-six hundred enrolled and also almost twenty-seven hundred have graduated over the life of the program. You can see the breakdown there throughout the townships. Obviously, here in Greenfield, being the largest portion of, of kids under the age of five, taking advantage of that. So always happy to be a part of getting that literacy and books in the kids' hands before they even reach school age. So that's an awesome thing to continue to be a part of. I mentioned the election earlier. You can see there that both of our library locations were forty-five percent of all voting in, in the county was done at one of our two library locations this past year. So very, very busy those election days, but that's a, a service and that we're really happy to be able to provide for the community. And yeah, that's, that's all I'll say about that. If you haven't been to the library recently to see our new art installation, I encourage you to stop by and check it out. It's really, really cool. Chris Sickle's a local artist with Red Note Studio. He created a whole world that is continuing to grow and expand and will over the years. It's where our, our fish tank used to be located in, in the children's area. But his installation actually received an award from the Society of Illustrators. And it's called Over, 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 Under and Beyond, and it earned a silver medal. So they actually took a piece from that collection and it's been on display in New York for the last several months. And so that was. And so that was really cool. But um, Chris is an amazing artist and he's been a great partner to have. He's done several programs at, at the library for people to come and learn how he does his art style. And I'm just always blown away by how he creates those things. Because if I tried to do the same thing, it would look nothing like that. Some projects we were able to complete in twenty twenty-four, uh, not always the most exciting things, but as you know, here at the school, they are necessary. We did replace the chiller and the boilers at the main library uh, to keep everybody comfortable. Yes. Uh, we did also replace our sorter, uh, which is the picture in the top right there that at the main branch allows us to return materials and it also sorts them out by item type. Ours was about ten years old, which we learned is about the life of those machines, so we were able to replace that one. Uh, it takes up a little bit less room, so it gave us, gave us more uh, workspace there. It's also uh, quieter, more efficient. And so that was a nice addition, very smooth uh, process to update that. We also resurfaced the parking lot uh, at the Sugar Creek location. And then in the top left there, we added new self-checks this year. Our self-checks were also, we'd had those for uh, close to ten years, if not longer as well. And so we, we upgraded those. They have a lot of new features uh, that people can take advantage of right there at the self-checkout. So really good to do those things. Um, a few projects that we have on the radar for this year. You can see a shot there of the parking lot at the main branch. Uh, it needs some work also. Uh, if you've driven in there and hit one of the potholes, I'm sorry. I don't know how you, if you didn't, good for you. You're a great driver. You managed to avoid it. So, um, but we will be doing that later this year. You may have noticed, uh, we, we removed some of the trees there along the entry uh, to the parking lot. That's in preparation for that. We're going to be expanding that. Uh, so there's not quite such a bottleneck there um, on the way into the library. And then we will replant uh, some trees that are not uh, Bradford pearson and basis species. So we'll have more, more native uh, trees there after a while. And then we're also currently undergoing a website redesign. I was just in a meeting on that today. Uh, that's going to be really cool. Once we launch that, that should be out by August or September, as long as we stay on track there. So uh, excited to unveil that later this year. And then our current board makeup, um, obviously we have appoint, uh, appointments from the four county schools as well as the county commissioners, county council and, and Greenfield Central. So thank you for uh, allowing Jeannie to work with us. She is great. And uh, we couldn't do it without all of our board members. Michelle's here tonight also. Uh, but Libby, Manship is our president, Fred Fox uh, is our vice president, Lori Elmore, secretary, and then our four members, Tom Sang, Zach Trere, uh, Michelle Hasty and Jeannie Roberts. So they're awesome. We are so thankful for their support. And with that, I have probably taken up enough of your guys' time, but I would be happy to answer any questions about the library if you have one.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, on to student handbooks, first reading.
This is a first reading and you have a, the exhaustive handbooks, but you also have a, a cover sheet. We have some people from each tier to talk a little bit about some highlights. Brooke, you want to start? Start with the high school.
Uh, yeah, thank you for allowing me to share with you tonight. I wouldn't say anything significant added or changed in our handbook. A few um, just uh, changes, just because things change sometimes. A few student conduct, uh, just clarifications, things we want to make sure were clear to people. And you can see those there, a dress code thing about blankets and congregating in restrooms and clarified some ISD policy just to make it match in a couple of places. A note on early graduation, we did change some language there. This is a state uh, compliance issue. The rule now on early graduates is they must complete one of the seals. So we added that in there just so that people have a, an understanding that that is a requirement. That's not something we made a decision on locally. That is a statewide requirement now. We did add a homeschool provision. We have um, had homeschoolers in our building. Uh, generally they want to compete or, or uh, participate in some sort of extracurricular. Um, we wanted to tighten that up a little bit just so that they knew expectations. Uh, the office of school finance um, requires that they be under halftime. And so we just um, wanted to put some parameters on that so that they knew. And also um, that um, they couldn't enroll with us as homeschoolers just to use um, the uh, what's the word I'm thinking of? The uh, career center uh, program. So, um, and then we made a, a little clarification on our um, student activities code of ethics just about um, the drug and alcohol and tobacco use policy. And it's just a little unclear um, just how it lined up with the random drug testing protocols. So we just wanted to bring that up, so. And then you guys have already approved the new athletic code handbook, um, so that's in there as well. So happy to answer any questions that you have specific to something I mentioned or anything I didn't mention.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooke.
Mr. Cleveland?
So at the junior high, uh, we found over the past few years that what we've already developed is working really well when it comes to a lot of things and we're pretty pleased with that. Um, the one thing we did make some additions to, uh, you already looked at the athletic handbook that Mr. Evans spent a lot of work on over the past two years uh, to really kind of define a lot of things. We expect for our junior high athletes as, as student athletes. And then also too, really a couple of things just were added on some clarification points on dress code. Just to kind of tighten up a couple of things there. So really didn't change a whole lot, uh, kind of like the way things are going. We're going to keep moving that way.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, Olivia, tier two. Handbook season.
There was a joke made earlier that it must be handbook season because I was here in a shirt and tie, ready to go for the meeting. So it must be correct. I have the GIS and the MIS handbook updates. Um, only six quick things. The first one was just page one is just yearly updates such as dates and information like that. Uh, update number two is page four and five. That's updates to our page numbers. Number three is a little bit more extensive. That's on page seven and eight. We double-checked our exempt categories and what counts as an excused absence and non-excused absence is the same for the entire district of what we have. We just were updating it, putting it in the right place. Uh, we changed our calendar on page eleven to the new calendar upcoming. Page thirty-seven, we removed the student assistance program from Bowen, Bowen information just to be the most accurate and up, up to date. And then the last thing, on page forty-six this year, we realized that we didn't have any statement about the use of AI or virtual intelligence. So we borrowed from some of our peers at the high school and what their statement was. We kind of tweaked it, made it our own. Um, and then we just added an extra line of what to do with academic dishonesty um, and how that plays out in our school building. Questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowman, tier one.
Again, as others have stated, we really didn't have too much to change either. Um, we decided this year to combine our handbooks to create kind of one tier one handbook, which added all the school information. Um, and start times and end times, which are on page two. And then on page forty-six, we added the work habits and personal behaviors from our report card that we realized was missing. And then on page forty-seven, we also added kind of a what can I do to help my child section in regards to our new standard space report card. And that's all we changed. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Sancini on the, is she back there?
She is.
She preschool?
Good evening. So the Cougar Cub Staff Childcare Handbook is a newly created document. Out of what was already in the Cougar Cub Preschool Handbook. But the changes for the twenty-five, twenty-six Cougar Cub Family Handbook include an increase in program fees on page five, a multiple child discount on page seven, weekly rate change on page seven, a change in late pickup fees for page seven, discipline and behavior on page nine, potty training protocol on page nine and ten, board policy unpaid meals on page eleven and twelve, and then transportation update on page twelve.
That's it there.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cleveland, did you have anything on the athletics side that you wanted to highlight specifically or?
Uh, the previous handbook has been approved already, but that is included in the.
With the high schools?
Yeah, uh, within ours.
Okay. I think that's all we have.
Alright, thanks. Right on to overnight.
We have a handful of them here for the out-of-state overnight trips. We have the Vex Robotics team traveling, requesting to travel to Dallas. Uh, obviously very proud of them, our state champions there. Love to see them go there. We also have a request from the FCC LA advisor, Mrs. Keish, about taking students to Orlando in July. Women's soccer coach Laura Mann requesting to take the team to a team camp at Butler, be an overnight camp in July. Similarly, the boys soccer coach, Coach Holden requesting to take the men's soccer team to Anderson in July. And lastly, head uh, cheerleading coach Krista Carey requesting to take the team to the UCA Cheerleading Summer Camp that would be at Ball State University, also in July. These are trips that have been taken in the past. These groups understand the expectations for overnight and the out-of-state field trips. I would recommend approving.
Yeah, can you get a motion to approve these overnight out-of-state field trips? That's presented.
I move we approve the out-of-state and overnight trips. That's presented.
Give a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose, thank you.
Thank you.
On to contract mandations, resignations, leaves and retirements.
Okay, leave of absence, Tiffany Howard, Kristen Lee Oliver, certified recommendations, Kayla Arguello. I got that right. Uh, Hayley Diaz Vega, Amanda Hodge and Ethan Robbins, certified resignations from Rebecca Rhodes. And on that second page. Over there, also Maggie Walters, certified retirement, Donna Connect Strong. ECA recommendations, David Connor, Aria Cordier, Pete Djenovic and ECA resignations from David Connor, Matt Dickerson, Luke Meredith and Grace Wyford. I recommend that the board approve those um, and give us permission to hire as needed for the duration of this year and for next year. And of course, we're going to bring those names to you at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Can you get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
I'll move that we approved the personnel report as presented and authorize hiring in the interim.
Okay, a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say no.
We do have a few of them this evening. I'd like to go ahead and introduce to you. Let's go and start with the high school. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. We had a few retirements and resignations at the high school and are thrilled. And in addition to it being handbook season in the spring, it's also hiring season. Nice to get on the uh, hiring cycle uh, very early. So our first introduction is Haley Diaz Vega. Um, Haley was Haley Burnside when she was at Greenfield Central. So uh, GC grad, um, she's attended Ball State University and Marion University. And she's going to teach English and MLL for us. So, uh, welcome Haley. Amanda Hodge joins us from Franklin Central High School. Uh, Amanda has degrees from uh, University of Indianapolis and Indiana Wesleyan. Uh, she's going to be teaching English ten and film lit for us next year, but we'll have a chance to um, develop some more electives over time. Um, she teaches a hugely popular uh, true crime elective in the police department at Franklin Central. Um, has a lot of extracurricular experience too, so welcome Amanda. Uh, Ethan Robbins is actually going to work in this building um, as a teacher at the academy at Greenfield Central, a hugely important job. Um, Ethan is currently a special ed teacher at Eastern Hancock and uh, brings experience in co-teaching various classes for credit and uh, supporting students in their individual paths. Um, Ethan will also be coaching football with Coach Knowlting, so we're glad to have another member of our staff. And uh, in addition to his new job, he's also recently engaged, so. Thank you, everybody. Be welcome.
Mr. Cleveland has uh, an announcement as well.
After going through a process of a very deep pool, uh, as always, usually with our administrators, uh, we have found a great one in Ms. Kayla Arguello.
Alright. Been there.
Just say it for everyone.
Arguello like mayo.
I've been back there saying it for. Um, she comes to us from Muncie Central. She's been the assistant principal there for three years. Prior to that, she was at Decatur Middle School for about five years as the assistant principal there. And prior to that, she has seven years of teaching as a Spanish teacher as well. So in our two rounds, she definitely rose to the top of both. I'm very excited to present her to everybody today and to get started with her next school year.
Okay, tier two, new teachers. Tier one? I think that's it then.
Alright, moving very long.
Yeah, we're going to push that to next month, the coaching.
Well, we don't have anything else on the board, uh, from the community. Um, important dates, regular school board meeting Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, commencement, May thirty-first. If we don't have anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
You can adjourn.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thanks, everyone, for coming.